Take your time, my friend. We'll go ahead and get this, get this party started. I'll go ahead and call the order, the June 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Cape Elizabeth zoning board of appeals. We have a, I think a full list here tonight of agenda items, four items that we're tackling. We'll get right to it. Just some, some brief opening remarks before we get to our minutes from our April 27th meeting. I just want to welcome attendees to the meeting of the Cape Elizabeth zoning board of appeals. We're bringing the meeting to order now. This is a public proceeding. And unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that's being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please let me know, Mike Valencourt, the chair, if there's, if you can't, if you're unable to hear or see. We have some limitations having, as we were doing this via Zoom, for what I understand will probably be the last time. But it's, things have gone pretty smoothly so far. So please, anybody who's, who's listening in and participating, just let us know if there are any, any technical issues or considerations. We will consider the prepared agenda, which has been published by the town. In the following order, I'll try to remember to do a roll call, which I almost never remember to do, will then hopefully approve the minutes from the April 27th, 2021 meeting will, we will tackle new business as there is no old business, and those are the four requests that I mentioned earlier. And then to the extent there are any communications, we can talk about those at the, at the bottom end of the agenda and then on to adjournment. As for new business being considered, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with provisions of the applicable ordinance or ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project application, we will, as a board, prepare a written opinion. Because the written opinion may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the board has taken the second vote adopting a written opinion. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the superior court, except as otherwise provided by law within 45 days of the board's decision. Also, to be certain, you preserve your individual right to file any such appeal. As an applicant, you must be certain that this board's record, record evidences your appearance this evening and the basis for your support or opposition of any given application. Again, please remember, this is a public proceeding. You'll have the right to hear and see what is happening. And all folks speaking will be asked to first state their name and address or affiliation. And again, as board chair and as board members, we try to be as, as, as customer and citizen friendly as possible. So if there are questions, please do, do let us know as, as we proceed. Let's go ahead with the roll call. Mike Valencourt, Chair of the Board. Mr. Katon.
Yes, Matt Katon here.
Very good. Kevin?
Kevin Just, present.
Great. Michael?
Michael Tatum Wheeland is present.
Aaron?
Aaron Moser, present.
And Colin?
Colin Powers, present.
All right. And I, I note, we have Ben McDougal, President, who is the town code enforcement officer. Looks like Carmen is, is monitoring this from afar. I believe that she's, she's preparing a recording for us. Hello, Carmen. Let's, um, let's jump into the, the minutes from April 27th, from the April 27th, 2021 meeting. Ben, Carmen, and the rest of the staff at the town of Cape Elizabeth were good enough to circulate those minutes a week or so ago. Any, any comments on the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve? Any friendly amendments? What do you guys have?
I would move that we approve the minutes.
All right. So moved by Kevin. Do we have a second? Second by Michael. Discussion on the minutes. All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes for April 27th, 2021. Mike Valencourt in favor?
Michael Tatum Wheeland in favor.
Kevin Just in favor.
Aaron Moser in favor.
Colin Powers in favor.
Matt Kane in favor.
Very good. All right. The, uh, the motion to approve the minutes from April 27th, 2021. Carries, the minutes are approved. Moving down the agenda, we have no old business. We're on to new business. Ben, I'm, I'm just going to call these in the order that they're listed on the agenda unless you had any suggested change to the sequence.
I, I do not. I put these on the agenda in the order that they arrived at town hall and didn't necessarily see any reason to reorder them.
Very good.
Excellent. Unless someone else feels differently, we can entertain that.
Everybody good with the order? We'll go ahead and dive into Richard Armstrong's application. Does that sound good? I'm seeing nods. Perfect. Okay. So, uh, new business agenda, item one is to hear the request of Richard B. Armstrong, owner of the property at Two Waverly Road, map U4, U4 lot 172, to enlarge a non-conforming, single-family dwelling based on sections 19-4-3.B dot four of the zoning ordinance. We'll give the applicant, Mr. Armstrong, an opportunity to speak. And prior to doing that, Ben, I don't know if you, if you have any initial comments for us on this particular application.
Sure. Mr. Armstrong came to me a couple of months ago with a building permit to do a small addition on the side of his house at Two Waverly Road. It's a non-conforming lot in the RA zone. And that would have a 20-foot front setback. And he's extremely close to that 20-foot front setback with his addition. And based on the site plan that he had, you know, is within inches either way of meeting the 20-foot setback. I informed Mr. Armstrong that he would need a survey in order to demonstrate compliance with the setback. And we, then he called me back and said, surveyors, we're telling him six to eight weeks for a survey and asked if there was another avenue. And I thought it would be appropriate here. It is a non-conforming structure. He's expanding a non-conforming structure and the addition is either within inches of the front setback or could be inches out of the front setback, but I think it's safe to be covered here this evening.
Clarification, Ben, you said RA zone, or is it RC?
It is RC zone.
RC, okay.
Said RA, that was a mistake.
No problem.
All right. Thank you for that, Ben. There are any objections, we'll go ahead and hear from Mr. Armstrong on his application. Mr. Armstrong, are you, are you with us? I, it looks like you're muted, Mr. Armstrong.
Do you have me now?
Yes. I can hear you loud and clear now. Thank you.
Good.
Do you want a video?
Yeah, why'd you put me? So they know what I look like.
I don't know how to do that.
Video if you want. You're not required to. Always happy to put a face with a name.
Okay. We're gonna try to do it if we can.
Okay.
There you go.
Gentlemen, that, I, I just want to thank you very much for your time to review our application. As Ben indicated, trying to get a surveyor today is really tough. So you, I think you were a little short on that. They were telling me 12 to 15 weeks out. But anyway, what we're doing is we're adding a very small addition, 11 by 13 to an existing room. The way, if you look at the site plan that our architect prepared, she set that back a little bit. So you'll see how it, that addition is back off the front line by about a foot and a half, two feet, something like that. So to make sure that we would be within the 20-foot setback line. As you can see, as it, as the setback goes diagonally across the lot, we're going out straight. So we're, we're moving further away from the setback line as we extend it out. I don't have any more to add to that, other than I appreciate your time and consideration on this. And if you have any questions you want to ask me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Yeah, we, we will go ahead and open this up for questions. I guess before we, we do that, Ben, I know that there were, there were a couple of emails that you forwarded along from folks. I don't know that any of them related to this particular application, but a, any feedback that you've gotten from, from members of the public?
I haven't had any feedback on this item.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Armstrong from, from the board? And you're muted right now.
So, Mr. Armstrong, I've got a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the, the, the diagram, the site plan. And it looks like this addition's, you know, small compared to the size of the house. And it looks like the, the front side toward Waverly Road is actually setback further from the, the front line than for the houses. Okay. And then it goes straight out. Right. And so there's a question, it sounds like there's a question of that little bit of, of, of new building right next to the existing structure might be, we don't exactly where it is.
Exactly. That's, that's why we're doing that. But that was the purpose of her setting that back. If you'll note, it doesn't come to the front line of the existing structure. It's set back a little bit.
Okay. And Ken, I mean, not, just not really seen close, closely looking at the interior plans. Is it practical at all to move that structure back six inches or a couple of feet?
No, because we have another, uh, we have a bathroom there and the structure, and it would, it would conflict with the bathroom.
Okay.
And it would kind of throw everything out of line.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yep. I'm Mr. Armstrong. Very straightforward application. You know, I don't see any, no, no big concerns with the, the proposed plan. I get my, my question is, where, where did the boundary information come from that is on the, on the, the site plan prepared by your architect?
That was, that was obtained by us at, at closing from the previous owner.
Yeah. Oh, so is that a, like a mortgage survey?
I believe it is, yes.
Which are notoriously inaccurate, unfortunately.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, no, I get it. Again, I, you know, I, I think it's a very reasonable request. I, it doesn't, you know, it seems to, it seems to check all the boxes that, that we need to look at. I, I just, this is, this is kind of an unusual ask from us. And Ben, Ben knows probably me more than other members, or I more than other members, really don't like to see applications without surveys. But I, I completely understand how, how backed up they are. I, I find that in my work as well. But, you know, I, I don't know, maybe the, the, you know, I just sort of toss this out to, to the rest of the board. I, I'm not even sure what we're being asked to approve. It, it's kind of a, kind of a a generic project with, with very little information with respect to what we're being asked to approve, which is the distance from the, the property lines. So, you know, I, I guess that's the, that, that's what concerns me more than anything. It's just the lack of information. Ben, you got something to?
Yeah, Ben, and I know Kevin's got a comment too. So go, go for it, Ben.
I, I would just say that, you know, it, this does appear to be a non-conforming structure based on the information we have. And Mr. Armstrong's asking to expand a non-conforming structure. So, you know, do we, do we know to the inch how far it is? No, but it's, this isn't a variance. We're not, we're not giving a variance to further violate the setback. We're saying that a non-conforming structure can be expanded. So I, I understand that we usually require surveys.
Yeah, no, I, I get, I guess my, well, I think what makes this one more unusual is the fact that the intent is to, to meet the setback, the 20-foot setback with the addition. And, and if, if it turns out that, in fact, the addition does meet that 20-foot front setback, Mr. Armstrong wouldn't need our approval at all, right? He would, he would just, he would just be a building permit.
That's right.
So that, you know, that's the, that's the strange part to me. In Mr. Armstrong, maybe, maybe I could ask a good question. What, what's the, is the schedule, are, are you trying to push this along very quickly?
Well, you know, it's, it's, we were gonna try to get this done this spring. But because of the, the need to, to get a variance, it, it has pushed it back. And of course, that gets, it conflicts with our contractor's schedule, material purchases, window purchases, that kind of stuff. So it kind of throws it back. And we really like to have it. My wife would love to have it before football season. She doesn't have to hear me yelling at the Patriots.
Right. We might be doing a lot of this. So, you know, if, again, I, you know, I, I don't have any concerns with the proposal itself. It's just with the lack of boundary data and, and location of the house. I, I'm just a, I don't know. It, I'm a little unsure as to how to proceed, but I'm happy to, happen to hear from other board members on this. If, you know, if everyone else is comfortable and can, can explain to me how we, we craft, you know, our, our findings, then I'm, I'm willing to go along with it.
Kevin, go, go ahead.
Yeah. So, so Mike, I actually have the, the same thought on the survey and, and was wondering if this was kind of perspective, but I mean, the way I sort of squared that circle a little bit is the survey's still going to be required regardless. And so the downside is, and, and I, I believe, you know, this, this addition, even if the addition met the setback, if that original house has encroached on it, it's still an expansion of a non-conforming structure. So it would still require our approval for that. The downside is it's a conforming structure and it doesn't need our approval. And what all we've done is said, you know, and, and maybe we craft this in the findings. If it's a non-conforming structure, it's approved under this section. And if it's a conforming structure, it doesn't need it anyway.
I think Ben can approve that addition, even, even if the existing building is non-conforming and the addition is conforming. Ben, can't you just approve that for that section?
Yeah, if that addition met the 20-foot setback, then that, that would be a building permit that I could approve.
Even though the, the existing house is non-conforming.
Right. But, you know, if you're, you're saying they're showing this in a conforming location on the plan. So if they moved, if they moved this addition one inch closer to the face of the house, you'd be comfortable approving it?
That's a very good question, Ben. Maybe, yeah, maybe, maybe you should have done that. I would have, I would have short circuited my, my argument right away. Again, I, yeah, I.
I guess I just, I don't see the downside to, to approving it even prospectively.
Matt, Matthew?
Thank you. Just, we were talking about some of the substance here and whether those are comments for the executive session and whether we should just focus a couple of queries for the applicant. And then the query is that I have for the applicant is, suppose that you receive permission from the board and at some later point it gets built and, and as the board member Kevin mentioned, that the survey is ma, is provided. And that the the new room is found to be non-conforming. It's not built where it's supposed to be. What then? Because the, the, the argument is that either you have to tear it down or remove the portion that, that's in the setback. So there's a risk there. Well, I perceive there may be a risk here. Because what we see is that it's referred to as the site plan, but I'm not really comfortable to, to rely on as to where the boundaries are and the setbacks are. And so in theory, it could be that this is not accurate. And so have you considered that as a possibility, Mr. Armstrong?
Are you addressing that to me, Matthew?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I thought you were addressing it to the board. Excuse me.
No, I had two points. One is that we were talking about substantive matters when you, we, we, we should have been asking you for information. And then I wanted to ask one quick question of you is that suppose that this information is wrong? Or it's, as I say, it's a foot off or two feet off. And you build this room. And what's the, what happens then?
Well, I, the, the only way that I could, I could answer that is to say, you know, we're doing everything we can to move it further back from the, the existing house, which is non-conforming. We purchased, we purchased a property, okay, that was already non-conforming. We're adding in a direction that's not in the direction of the street.
Okay. Mike, my, this is the way I, I, I think of your application is that we had a, a house over near the school. And it was there for a long time. They measured incorrectly and part of the garage was in the setback. And there was very little remedies available to the owner of that property. Are you chop off the portion? Or you seek a, and things in agreement with the town not to be in violation. And so my, my thinking here is that that's the risk here. Could be remote, could never come up. But, you know, we are thinking about approving an application that looks great for football season. But until we know where the lot lines are and the setbacks are, it's somewhat not accurate. Yep.
Ben? I, I think this situation's a lot different from the, from the one you were speaking of, where, where that one just came straight toward the street and needed a variance. I mean, the reason why this is here is in case this front property line is two, three, four, five feet erroneous, this, this approval will cover that. Because, I mean, that was my fear when Mr. Armstrong submitted the building permit. I said, well, mortgage surveys are, you know, notoriously couple, two, three, four feet off. So if that happened, then this addition would be in the, could be in the front setback by a couple of feet. But this approval kind of remedies the potential error that would be in the survey. He's got tons of breathing room on the other side. So if they got the side property line wrong by 10 feet, he's got tons of breathing room over there. So I, I, I really don't think we have a risk. Let's, you know, similar to the one that you're talking about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just weigh in quickly. I mean, I under, I completely respect and understand Michael's and Matthew's concerns about, you know, dimensions and having a survey. I, I almost got my tail in a crack, quite honestly, with the renovation that we did, that thankfully it, it all worked out. But I, I, I get that. But I feel like if we're painting the strike zone here, to Ben's point, it seems like there's enough wiggle room where, you know, we can safely, safely approve this. So, but Mr. Armstrong, Matthew also raises a good point, which is, you know, if something is wildly inaccurate and it's happened before, it'll happen again. You just have to understand that there's the possibility that you might be, you know, back with us or, or back with, with some other folks with the town trying to figure that out. But a, again, it doesn't look like that's going to be the case here. That's a, I, I think a, a risk, but not a substantial one.
Right.
A, any other questions for Mr. Armstrong? I want to then move on and, and see if there are other members of the public who have comments. And Mr. Armstrong, we certainly reserve the right and frequently do circle back to the applicants with additional questions or thoughts. So, but before we get to that, any, any further questions for Mr. Armstrong before we, we go into the public comment part of this process? All right. Hearing none. Y'all know how Zoom challenged I sometimes am. Are there any members of the public who want to speak on Mr. Armstrong's application?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't either. So, okay. I think we'll then move on to board consideration. Thoughts, motions, et cetera. Michael, your hand went up first.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I think we, we got a little caught up with, at my fault with things that have nothing to do with what we're supposed to be, what we're really asked to review here, which is, is the setback, assuming that it is closer than 20 feet to the front property line, does it need the setback to the greatest practical extent? And, you know, to me, you know, just for the record, I, I think it does. I, I, I don't think it's going to have a, a negative effect on any of the neighbors or on, I don't think it's going to cause erosion. I don't think it's gonna result in loss of substantial vegetation or anything like that. I think it's a, I think there's a strong argument to be made to approve it on those grounds. And, you know, after hearing other board members, you know, you know, I'm, I think I'm comfortable approving this. Whether or not ultimately it, it needs to be approved or not. And I'm not sure a survey will be required at, at any point through this process. I know some members said, well, he's gonna need a survey anyways, but I, I'm not so sure. It will. I mean, maybe not a bad idea to get that surveyor scheduled and just sort of confirm what those final dimensions are, but I, I don't know that it would be required. But anyways, I, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting this application going forward.
Other, Matthew?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. My reservation on, on where the setback is, it's not, I don't think that the, the now. I think when the house is transferred or if you wish to sell, a survey is going to be required at that point. Hopefully there are no surprises as to where it is, because then eventually if there is a surprise, then it has to be resolved at a later time. So I, I have, you know, I think the paperwork is enough to get there, the, the space on the side of the house. So I'm, I don't have an issue approving the application.
I, I do, I do agree with, with Mike that I don't, we can impose a, a survey requirement to, to confirm this if we chose to. I don't think there's any requirement at the moment unless we impose that. But I, I think, again, as I mentioned earlier, I think, I think I'm comfortable proceeding on this as is without that, without that requirement in this circumstance, in this, in this limited circumstance. Thank you. All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve the request of Richard B. Armstrong, owner of the property at Two Waverly Road, map U4 lot 172, to expand his house based on section 19-4-3.B dot four of the zoning ordinance. Do we have such a motion?
I moved.
All right. Aaron, Aaron's moved approval of the application. Do we have a second? We've got Michael as a second. Further conversation, discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion. Mike Valencourt in favor?
Aaron Moser in favor.
Michael Tatum Wheeland in favor.
Kevin Just in favor.
Colin Powers in favor.
Matt Kane in favor.
Great. All right. So, Mr. Armstrong, we've approved your application. Good luck. I hope the Patriots have a good season. We're gonna run through the findings of fact real quick, really quickly. As I mentioned in the opening remarks, we prefer applicants to stay on as we kind of hash through that. Should only take a few, a few more minutes. And then you can break out your hammer and nails and, and, and get right to work, you, as with Ben going forward.
I, I think, I appreciate your time and your, your thought on this. I know that's, I, I, I served on a planning board many years ago. And I know
I I served on a planning board many years ago, and I know what you what you have to come up with. And I appreciate your your thought process on this. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. I will run through the proposed findings of fact to to wrap this one up. Proposed finding of fact, one, the property is a nonconforming lot in the RC zone. The property contains a single family dwelling. Proposed finding of fact, two, the existing house does not meet the front setback requirement. The owner would like to construct an addition on the side of the house. Proposed additional finding of fact, one, the zoning court of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, and the impact on views. Proposed additional finding of fact, two, the proposed structure will not increase the nonconformity of the existing structure. Proposed additional finding of fact, three, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirement to the greatest practical extent. Proposed additional finding of fact, four, the building reconstruction meets the setback to the greatest practical extent based on the criterion section 19 dash four dash three dot B dot two and B dot four in the zoning ordinance. I would, Matt, Matthew, you have a comment? Go for it.
Just want to, can you confirm the whether it's RA or RC zone? I missed the full sentence when we originally talked about this in the beginning of the hearing. I just wanted to make sure we have that correct.
I think Ben confirmed RC. Is that right, Ben?
Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right. So I would obviously always welcome to to take friendly amendments or unfriendly amendments. But I'd entertain a motion to approve the proposed findings of fact and the proposed additional findings of fact.
I'm moved.
All right, Kevin.
Second.
Michael is a second. Further discussion on the proposed findings. Hearing none, all in favor. Mike Valencourt in favor.
Michael Tatum O'Wieland in favor.
We've got Michael and Aaron in favor.
Kevin Justin in favor.
Colin Powers in favor.
Patrick Keating in favor.
Very good, Mr. Armstrong. Good luck with everything. Go Pats.
There you go.
Hope the project goes well.
Thank you very much. And again, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. And well, should I be in touch with you, Ben? With the building permit?
Yes, you should.
Okay, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Take care, sir.
You too. Good night.
All right, all right, all right. So we are on to, excuse me. New business item two, to hear the request of Ann Hill, owner of the property at Six Crescent View Avenue, map U one six lot 54 for a variance, reconstruct and relocate a garage closer to the side property line based on section 19 dash five dash four of the zoning ordinance. Ms. Hill, are you present?
She's being represented by Mr. Danielson.
Good evening, Bob. You're on mute. Okay, you're you're off mute now. How are you?
I'm great, Mr. Chairman. How you doing?
Good, 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 doing well. Before we turn it turn it over to you, we'll just get a quick briefing from from Ben on the application.
And before you start, Ann is present at her house. I'm not sure if she knows how to get on.
Okay, and and Bob, if you need a little, if you need an opportunity to get her dialed in or anything, just, you know, just let us know.
Okay, great.
She's she's on with, I believe, with her daughter Kate Thompson as as an attendee. And if they, if we want to go to them, we can try to go to them. If they raise their hand, I'll allow them to come in as well.
Okay, so she just needs to raise her hand. But I don't, yeah, I don't think that she needs to participate. It's just for clarification.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. I see, I see. There we go. But we've got some Thompsons on the on the on the screen now. So before we move into the into Mr. Danielson and Ms. Thompson's presentation, Ben, if you would just give us a quick briefing on the application.
Sure, this one is, in fact, a nonconforming lot in the RA zone. And she has a garage that is nonconforming to the rear setback, just barely conforming to the side setback. And she's been having some trouble with the the main door to her house and its proximity to the driveway. And in order to make the house more user friendly, she'd like to bump the garage over about five feet, the same size garage. These are, these are this, these are very small lots for RA zoning setbacks of of 25 feet. You know, 80,000 square foot zoning and this lot is maybe maybe a quarter or less. It's point two one acres. Yeah, it's a it's a quarter acre in two acre zoning. So it's a small lot with with difficult setbacks.
Okay, and my my apologies, Ms. Hill, I identified you as as Ms. Thompson. That was a name that popped up on my screen. So my apologies to you for that incorrect reference there. Ben, thank you for for that in information. And are there, let me ask, are there questions for Ben before we move into attorney attorney Danielson's and Ms. Hill's presentation on the application? All right, not seeing anything right off the bat. So Attorney Danielson, if you want, if you have comments on the application, and if Ms. Hill does, leave that to your discretion as to how you handle that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a picture, actually, there's three or four pictures. One of them is a close up picture of the porch. And you can see that she can barely open the door with the railing. And what she liked to do is basically bump out the porch a little bit so that she has a safe landing and add some steps because because right now it looks like it was just kind of crammed in there. And with the addition of the railing, it doesn't look like it's very safe, and certainly it's not accessible or something that people can use with ease. So what she'd like to do is basically move the garage over five feet. Same size garage, same footprint, but five feet into her yard so that she can then create a safe landing on the porch for the house. The driveway is obviously there, and she'd like to keep the driveway on that side of the house. She also has limitations where else she could put it because the septic system in the leach in the leach field are on other parts of the house. And if you look at one of the other pictures, there's a generator right where the garage is going to go. She's already relocated the generator. And there's some propane tanks along the rear, which don't affect the setback, but she's already relocated the propane tanks so they wouldn't be in the neighbor's vision. Basically, she's trying to deal with the practical difficulty of having that very, very small lot, which predates this setback requirement. And we think that we've provided information that supports all of the requirements of practical difficulty. Would you would you like me to outline those for you?
And if there's, if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer them. It really it the same size garage, and it is a matter of going straight out the stairs and straight down compared to the picture you see that has stairs that angle out right next to the door. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Ann.
And Attorney Danielson, I think what we'll do is we'll we'll just circle back to you if we have particular questions about the the prongs here, the various criteria. Save you a little bit of time and breath to the extent that we have questions, we'll let you know. Questions for Attorney Danielson and for Ms. Hill at the moment? Michael?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, hopefully. Do do either of you know when that garage was constructed?
The the lot was laid out in 1959, but I'm pretty sure that the garage was constructed some years ago. And it's, that's pretty rough shape, isn't it?
I don't, I guess, yes, it is. I don't know when it was. I've been in the house for five years, and I don't know much about it before then.
Okay. Ben might like to dig up some information. But my my other question is is this is is this a request to to make the make the property more accessible? Because someone living there has a disability, or is this more a convenience? Issue. And the reason I I it might sound like a weird question, but there's there's there is a provision in our ordinance that that allows us to grant variances for that exact purpose.
Shall I answer, Bob? Because it isn't for a disability. It's just a very awkward and unsafe kitchen entrance. And everything is just smushed together into small space even for snow removal for the people to remove snow or for shoveling to get out of the it's it's just a lot in a very small space with no other solution other than to have the garage be farther over.
It that the pictures demonstrate that. So now I can appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin, and then Matthew, I believe.
I just have a real quick question. The the picture that has the garage with with the landing of, you know what, it's smush, whatever. Is the intent here to keep the porch and basically just have the stairs come off directly into the driveway? Or is it rebuilding some side of that kind of porch landing area?
That little porch thing would be gone and straight stone steps coming down.
In the same location with the same
In the same, in the same location.
Roughly the same footprint.
Yes, there's a picture that the person drew up. There's a little bracket with an overhang over the door, but no more, no more small porch thing, just normal stairs going straight out.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was all I had, Mike.
Matthew, I think I think you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Attorney Danielson, I want to refer to the the variance certificate of variance. Do you have a copy of that?
Yep.
Could you assist us in explaining the significance of the variance? And how it applies to, I'm looking at the very large drawing where it has the proposed garage here. And the feet that's from the side setback over to the garage. So essentially, there's three queries for you. One is, explain to us the significance of the variance. Second is how that applies to the drawing.
Yeah.
And this is still a registered document with the deed up at the registry.
That that variance is not for this property. That variance is for the property across the street. The property across the street requested a 13 foot variance for to build a garage from a one unit garage to a two unit garage. And in 2010, the board granted the variance. The the key part about that variance is that this neighborhood is trending on trying to improve all the lots. And there's a there's a reference in that variance that there are more people in the neighborhood with nonconforming garages than there are otherwise. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to bring their lots into conformity or have have improvements that are consistent with the neighborhood. And the person who got the prior variance was kind enough to share it with us and said, this is, this is very typical of what's going on in our neighborhood, and we thought that would be helpful for you.
Thank you. That explains much. It adds a few wrinkles for us to consider in a moment or two. Thank you.
Does that that do it for now for you, Matthew?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant and Attorney Danielson at this point in time? We always reserve the right to circle back. All right, hearing none at the moment. Ben, did you receive any additional input or comments on this particular application?
I did. I received an email from Renee and Jim Lewis, and they're at Eight Crescent View, their neighbor in support of the application.
Okay. Thank you. Are are there any other members of the public who are participating here this evening who want to speak up and offer any thoughts or input on this application? I I'm not seeing anybody, but Ben, let me know what you're seeing there.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. All right. Well, we will close this to public comment. Again, we reserve the right to follow up with Attorney Danielson and Ms. Hill with for any questions. But we as a board can now start our conversation about how we might want to handle this application. Thoughts? Matthew?
I'm struggling with the application just on a straight read of the ordinance. The problem that I have is the variance from the neighbor across the street or on the street. You know, I'm more inclined to just replicate that variance because it seems to me that we're going to say that one neighbor shouldn't have something another neighbor should not have. So I'm struggling with the variance that was provided in the packet. I don't have an answer, by the way.
Kevin?
I see Matt went on mute, so I'm guessing he's done for the moment. I I you know, we talk about this a lot, all the time when variance has come up, the standards for granting variances are extraordinarily high. You know, on the kind of bare logic setting, you know, this is, they're looking at a setback that's still greater than 20 feet in an area where that makes sense, but that's not the zoning designation that's mapped to this particular neighborhood. And while I don't exactly, you know, think that our you know, I think we're seeing this on a lot of cases where our zoning ordinance maybe isn't as flexible as it could be or should be. The fact is, we're not the ones who map the neighborhoods to the zoning ordinance that that was, you know, done elsewhere. And whether the RA designation is appropriate for this particular lot or this particular neighborhood is, you know, outside of the scope of you know, what we do and what this, you know, variance request is. I like Matt looked at this certificate of variance and, you know, it was granted. It's it's, you know, legal and lawful, and it looks like it was done in the right way. But I, you know, I struggle with how that applies to this particular request. And the specifics of, you know, the the need for that variance outside of the very limited scope that we can approve that that, you know, Michael had mentioned a little bit earlier. I want to try to find a way to get here. I'm not, I'm not really seeing it yet, though. So again, I don't I don't quite know how to go on from that, but that's my initial sort of view here.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Aaron?
I'm not really seeing what the problem here is. I think we've demonstrated, I think they've demonstrated practical difficulty or lack of it, rather. I think what they want to do is necessary, actually, and there's no other way to do it. So I'm not really sure why we were looking at the one across the street. I mean, it's great that they provided it as, I guess, evidence of hey, people have done this in the past in the neighborhood, but I don't see why we even have to look at that. And why, I don't, I'm not sure why that opens can opens a can of worms.
Aaron, what's the, help me to to understand your point of view as to what's the necessary part?
Well, I think looking at, as one of the members said, looking at the photos, that's, it's an impractical staircase that for safety reasons needs should be made wider and made easier to maintain. And that renders the garage and the driveway renders the garage a little less useful.
The one of the issues that we're going to come up against is that this practical difficulty was created by a previous owner. And that practical difficulty is stuck with the property. And that practical difficulty is stuck with the property now. Uh, so how do we get past that? You know, and the garage is not being operational today. You know, it's a fit, you know, it's manageable. But what I don't like is that a neighbor has something that this property apparently should not be getting. Um, I, that sense of fairness bothers me here because I, why not? I mean, you know, you have neighbors supporting this neighbor, this applicant. Why not have a, um, garage moved over a little bit?
Okay. So the, in your view, the unfairness was created when the people across the street got the variance?
No. There, there's two things. One is, um, the house is built. It has an odd way coming off into the dr- the driveway. When they're talking about gaining a variance, it's not because of the, the act of the previous owner has some unique set of circumstances. I don't see that here. What bothers me is that a neighbor with a very similar lot can build a garage, a two-car garage as close as what the applicant is now seeking here. And so, but for an example of this variance, um, there should be a fairly clear application that there should be no variance. That, that's my thinking at the moment.
Okay.
Uh, Attorney Danielson, go ahead, go ahead.
If you, if you read our application, it stands on its face as far as practical difficulty. The lot was laid out in 1959 as a small lot. How the garage got there really isn't material because it was placed on the lot where it was. The practical difficulty is, is that everything around it doesn't allow her to have a safe exit from this kitchen of the house. Now, what's there in existence now was right. It was smooshed together and somebody said, oh, the heck with it. We'll just put where we can fit it. But that's not safe or practical. So basically you're forcing this lady to try to open a kitchen door into the snow with a railing that's about two inches away. And all she's asking to do is to fix that. Now, we've outlined the criteria of practical difficulty in our application. And I, I thought we did a pretty good job of indicating that there is trends in the neighborhood. There's, uh, the uniqueness of this lot is smaller than most of the houses and, and smaller than most of the lots of the neighborhood. It's only a quarter of an acre as Ben outlined. And for this person to improve their property, it doesn't make any sense to keep it in the same location because she's had the same problem with the access from the, or egress from the kitchen. All, all we're looking at as, as an applicant is just the criteria of our application. We provided the additional variance as evidence that the town has granted similar variances in the neighborhood under similar circumstances. And the variance across the street was 13 feet into the setback. Ours is only five feet into the setback. And you can see from where the location of the setback is and the leach field, the generator and everything else, that this is really the only practical solution. It wouldn't make sense for her to put another garage where it is because she'd still be forced with driving her car past that deck um, that she wants to improve. I, I can't explain it any other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael?
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I, uh, ask some, some questions of, uh, of the applicant or, and/or their attorney?
Absolutely not. Go, go right on ahead.
Is there, so? I like, I like to just go right down through our, our, uh, our review standards. And so, uh, I, I actually think you've addressed, um, the fact that, that there are unique circumstances on the property. And it's not the general condition of the neighborhood. I think it's probably pretty clear that, that the project will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. You know, something as, as minor as this, and it sounds like there's plenty of garages. And in fact, this lot has a garage. You know, what, the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner. You know, obviously someone built a, someone constructed this situation, which now is, is a practical difficulty. So that, that's one that we, we, we're going to need to, we're going to need to get around. Uh, there's no feasible, no other feasible alternative. I think you've made that argument. Uh, garage doesn't really fit anywhere else on the property. Um, and it won't unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment. I think, I think that's probably pretty clear. When we, when we get to, we, we also have to look at, at the, the standard, the practical difficulty standard, um, talks about significant economic injury. And, and that's defined as placing the applicant at a disadvantage in the neighborhood. And it would prevent the applicant from having a structure or accessory structure comparable in size, location and number to those of other lot owners in the immediate neighborhood, but in no case fewer than 10 of the nearest property owners. Is that, I, and, and I didn't see anything in the ord- in, in your application on that. But, but I may have seen that. I may in fact have seen that information in the, in the other variants. The, for the, for the neighbor across the street. I, I think there was some of that analysis in there. Is, is that?
That's my understanding that they documented, they documented the neighborhood. And so I didn't repeat that work.
Okay. So I, I can, I can appreciate that. So I think that, I think it's useful that we have this other variance for that. For that information. So, I know I just said a lot and, and, uh, and I guess I don't really have a, uh, okay, I, I'm not really gonna, voice, I guess, a, a decision right here. Again, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the, the fact that the prac- practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner because clearly a prior owner constructed this, which is now.
Can I, can I, can I comment on that, please?
Yeah, that, that's fine. That's fine by me. And then, and then I know, uh, Ben had his hand up as well, but go forward, Attorney Danielson.
Okay. The existing garage was built in accordance with what appears to be the setbacks that are required. So the, the practical difficulty is that the existing garage was smushed in there, for lack of a better term. And all she wants to do is try to make a safe situation out of a situation that it isn't, it isn't not, I mean, it isn't that the garage is a bad garage right now. It's the garage, it doesn't have access, sufficient access to get to the kitchen. And, and we're saying that is a practical difficulty. That is something that she can't design anything that's going to change that by leaving the garage where it is. And the simple solution, which seems to be supported by the neighborhood and supported by the 10 houses and everything else, is that nobody has an objection to, is to just slide the garage over five feet. It's not increasing any impervious area. It's not affecting any wetlands. It's not affecting anything else, but it does solve her a problem. And seemingly without any adverse impact to anybody else. That's, that's the concern that we have. Go ahead, Hannah.
I should, I should correct one thing. It is already too close to the back. And, and just sliding it over, it wouldn't be any closer. It would be the same, um, amount, same distance to the back.
Thank you.
All right. Now, thank you for that. Ben, you had your hand up a, a moment ago.
I did. The, uh, the setback in this zone in, in the 50s and 60s and I believe up to into the, I believe in the 70s as well, was 20 feet on the side. So, you know, the practical difficulty could be the result of, of a zoning change. I, I don't think the, uh, when the owner built this, I don't think they knew the zoning was going to change. It was built, it was built prior to today's zoning. So, uh, I'm, you know, that, that could change the argument for that question C. That when, when they, when they built this, the, I, I believe when this was built, the, the setback would have been 20 feet. And, you know, why they chose to put it there, no one can tell, but, uh, they didn't know that zoning would change to preclude them from doing, doing an expansion or a movement in the future.
Right. And then, and then the include of, of the, um, granting of the variance from, you know, ye- years ago, um, I think we've all talked about this. I think I'm just beating a dead horse is, I think simply to establish that, uh, this would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, that it's in keeping with, with, you know, what's been done previously. Um, I saw Kevin's hand go up, I think.
Yeah, I, I, I was just going to say, and, and sorry, I dropped off for a second, uh, with some Zoom difficulties that we won't have next month. Uh, you know, on the practical difficulty side, you know, my thought is this house was, did we get a definitive date for when the house was built? Mid 50s? Was that what?
It was, the lot was laid out in 59, so probably 60, 61.
60, 61. You know, what was sort of acceptable and accepted and, and maybe the 1960s, uh, just through the passage of time, you know, I, I don't necessarily think what a prior owner did constitute it. You know, maybe that didn't constitute a practical difficulty at the time, but now it does. And it could also change with the use of a house. I mean, there's a front door on this house. This is a side door, but if this is the primary door, um, that then, again, it's a no-fault practical difficulty, um, in my mind. So that, I, I think I'm, I, I'd be okay with that prior owner thing. Um, quick, quick question, just going back, um, Ms. Hill or, or Ms. Danielson. Did, you know, if the garage is in acceptable shape, had you looked at prior to this? Um, whether it was feasible to move that garage door and still accomplish what you wanted to with the, the side? Um, and again, I'm not suggesting that's something that would be done. I'm just curious if in your diligence, you had considered that, uh, prior to coming with the variance request.
There isn't space for the stairs to come out and have the 36 inches and then two stairs down. It goes right into the, into the driveway. Does that answer that?
Uh, but I, yeah, that, that answers part of it. But as I look at this, it looks like the proposed garage, um, that door is, is much further over to one side. And I was curious if you had looked at whether or not moving that garage door to the side would still get you enough space for that, those stairs without actually moving the whole garage.
The drawing has it farther over also for snow removal and, and just to have, have that space. But I, I don't believe there's space to alter. The garage floor is past any kind of, um, remedy and needs either a new floor or, I mean, the, the floor is not functional and the driveway is higher than the garage floor. So water comes down into the garage. Other things to know, if that helps.
Yeah, I think it's a, it, it certainly, you know, adds, adds to a fact pattern for consideration, so.
Okay.
All facts help. Um, uh, one, sorry, one final question. The picture that has the generator, is that the generator as relocated or was there a further relocation?
That was before. The, the generator and the propane tanks are now over on the north side of the house. And that's the side that has the leach field, the whole, um, side yard. Yeah. So they're not there anymore.
The backside of the house, correct?
The backside of the house had the two propane tanks and the side of the house had the generator. And the, um, the email is from the Lewis's who are on that side. And that's where the, um, that's where I'd be moving closer to. It would all just be a lot nicer.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. That, that's, that's the extent of my, my questions for now. Thanks.
Thanks.
Matthew?
Chair, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to the, the variance. And I must say, the variance is, I think, is the key for this application. I know it's across the street or down the street. And, uh, I just want to refer to people's attention to the third page, uh, the letter C. And, and this is where we're talking about practical difficulty. And this refer, provides, I think, precedent for Ben's point. Um, and I quote, this is a question to, uh, practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner. And, and I quote, and this is underlined, uh, the law was created before the ordinance. And so the practical difficulty is not the result of any action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. Uh, close quote. That's a similar point that Attorney Danielson was talking about when the layout of the lot occurred. And I'm, I'm willing to let, you know, hang my hat on the variance as the basis to approve the application. Otherwise, I don't think there's, my, my vote would be no. I don't think they mean, the applicant would meet the application, uh, under the ordinance. Uh, but I think because of the variance on that street, I think in these circumstances, this, I think, a, a fair basis to, uh, say that it could be, uh, a, a reason for why it should be approved. I think I also take Mike's, uh, point earlier about the value of the property being different from the other, um, properties in the street. So I just want to make that clear. And I think that provides us some basis to, um, to move forward with the application.
And I, I agree, Matthew. I thought that was helpful to know that, uh, the dimensional requirements had indeed changed. And I'm, uh, I'm going to be comfortable supporting the application. I don't know quite where everybody else is, but I'm going to go ahead and, and make a, make a motion and then we can talk about it. Uh, move to approve the request of Aunt Kay Hill, owner of the property at Six Crescent View Avenue, map U16 lot 54 for a variance to reconstruct and relocate the garage based on section 19 dash 5 dash 4 of the zoning ordinance. Um, do we have a second? I think, Aaron, Aaron, you're muted, Aaron, but I think you said sec- is that a second, Aaron? All right. Good. Um, so we've got the motion. We've got the second, uh, further discussion and consideration of the motion. Kevin?
Uh, so I like everything about this application. I, I think it makes all the sense in the world. And, um, my, my only issue, and I'm not a hundred percent sure how I'm going to vote until I actually vote. I do feel like we're zoning a little bit by variance, which I really, really don't like. I don't think that this, this, I don't think the intent of the ordinance is to zone these, whatever, four streets, I guess. Um, the way that they're zoned. And, you know, if we're, if the town is looking at changing certain ordinances uh, related to zoning anyway, I think this should be one of those that they look at. Uh, it, it makes me, it makes me very uncomfortable that I feel like we're, we're zoning by variance as opposed to, uh, you know, applying the ordinance in, in its strictest interpretation. That said, this makes all the logical sense in the world, and I don't really feel like I could, in good faith, vote against it. So, um, that, that's where my head is on this.
I, 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 I agree with, I agree with you, Kevin. I mean, I'm in the, I'm in the same place. We keep talking about strike zones and this is, this is, I think, just barely a strike for me. Ben, you, you, I saw your hand, hand go up.
Yeah, just, uh, for administrative purposes, Carmen and I both, both missed who made that initial motion. I know Aaron seconded.
I, I, I just commented back to Carmen that I had made the motion.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Further discussion from the board on the pending motion. All right. I'm not seeing anything. So all in favor of the motion, uh, to approve? Mike Valencourt in favor.
Kevin Justin, favor.
Paul and Powers in favor.
Aaron, motion in favor?
Michael Tatum, Willan in favor?
Matthew Kane in favor?
All right. Very good. The motion carries. Um, and, uh, Ms. Hill, congratulations. What we'll do is I'm going to take a couple, take a couple of minutes. We need to go through some proposed findings of fact. We ask that the, um, applicant remain on, on the line, just in case there are any, any questions that, uh, come up as part of that process. But, um, uh, I, But, um, uh, I I think this is a, I think this is a good result. None of us really love the 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 variance game, I know, but I think this is a an appropriate, um, use of that tool here. Uh, I'll run through the, uh, proposed findings of fact and proposed additional findings of fact, and then we'll, uh, we'll let you move on to the rest of your evening. Proposed finding of fact, one, the property is a non-conforming lot in the RA zone. The property contains a single-family dwelling and detached garage. Proposed finding of fact, two, the existing garage is twenty-five free feet from the side property line and fourteen point one feet from the rear property line. The owner would like to reconstruct the garage and move it over five feet, so it will be twenty feet from the side property line and fourteen point one feet from the rear property line. Proposed finding of fact, three, no part of the property is located in the Shoreland Overlay District. Proposed additional finding of fact, one, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Proposed additional finding of fact, two, the granting of a variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Proposed additional finding of fact, three, the the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner. And proposed additional finding of fact, four, no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to this petitioner. I suspect, I suspect we may have some, uh, comments, um, from the board on these proposed findings, given the, uh, the nature of the discussions. So if anybody has any any suggestions on those proposed proposed findings, feel free to speak up. Matthew.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to suggest, as a friendly amendment, uh, that we refer to the variance that was approved by the previous board in April two thousand ten. That was part of the packet, dealing with the, um, associated neighborhood property. Uh, and in particular, I think the reference to, um, the the quote that I I read earlier to the record, uh, under a practical difficulty. I think that that is important for us to to have that as a findings of fact, as the basis as to why we reached the, uh, a successful vote on the application.
We we could, we could reference that application. I'm wondering if it's, if it would be cleaner to simply say, um, for proposed additional finding of fact, three, the practical difficulty is not the result of, uh, hold on, sorry, I'm in the wrong place here. It would be proposed additional finding of fact, two, the granting of a variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as evidenced by, uh, construction that has occurred within that, uh, neighborhood. Consistent with and then I guess we, the certificate of variance for eleven Crescent View Road dated May twentieth, twenty-ten. And I'm not really hot on on referencing other applications, but I think that is, you know, that does offer some substantiation as to as to why we're willing to do this. But I don't know if there are, you know, thoughts or comments on that.
Chair, I have no comment. I think that's that's fine. Uh, I just that there were points were made during the, um, hearing. I think this covers that, uh, those issues that were addressed.
Kevin, what do you, what do you think? I see a.
So I'm I'm the non, the non-lawyer, uh, here. I mean, I think if we, if we reference it once, we're effectively referencing the entire thing, which I don't actually have a problem with. It's recorded, it's of record, it's precedent. We clearly, there's a recording of this meeting. We clearly have referenced it and and used it as uh, as material in our consideration. I mean, I'd almost add it as additional finding of fact, five, that the board reviewed and considered the certificate of variance and the findings of fact contained therein, or something to that effect.
Michael.
I you know, I I I don't think that other variance has has any, the the fact that a variance was was granted across the street. I I understand Matt's argument that, uh, it 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 would be unfair to not, um, approve this variance because one was approved across the street, but, uh, I think this one and and I think there was some useful information there, but it's in the record, um, and and I I think this application stands on its own. I don't think it it it, um, I don't think we need to reference the 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 a a variance on on a another lot, but that's just my opinion.
I I I'm in a, I'm comfortable with that myself. Matthew.
He we don't we rephrase my query for you. The reference to the variance is germane for our discussion. And also for the applicant, the rationale that's the, um, the of the practical difficulty is, in my view, the 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 linchpin for this application. Uh, and then that justifies for the variance. Now, I take the other board members' comments that, you know, the this variance is out there, it's not directly applicable to the to this application. But on the other hand, there's a that rationale that a previous board, uh, the ZBA, um, allowed a variance, and then I accept that. So that's my point. That's why I'm thinking that it's important to include, but, you know, I'm only one one member.
I ju- just add something to to what Matt said. I mean, some of our discussion was the other, you know, sort of the the ten homes, the ten surrounding homes in the neighborhood. That is in the other variance application. It's not in this application, and that is something in in our charge to consider that we did consider, so.
But but they they included this as a as as a attachment to their application, so I, you know, I I mentioned earlier, I I think it's already in the record.
I I don't think we necessarily need it in the findings, but I don't really care.
I don't, I don't care that deeply either. I I like Matt, like the language of craft, practical difficulty and the ordinance, the language about the ordinance, um, being enacted after the lot was laid out. I I I think that's important to include.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we just say that?
All right, all right. So let's let's make this as clear as we can for Carmen. Let me find where, hold on, bear with me. All right, so that would be under, let's see, proposed additional finding of fact, three, which currently reads the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner. And I think what we would add is it it is the result of a zoning change by the town of Capel is Elizabeth, subsequent to the construction of of the home on the property. Does that sound right? Yeah. Okay. So we've got a friendly amendment then to the proposed additional findings of fact. Any other, um, thoughts, comments on the, uh, proposed findings and the proposed additional findings? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the proposed findings of fact, proposed additional findings of fact with the friendly amendment to proposed additional finding of fact, three, relative to practical difficulty. Ben.
Yeah, on on the other page, there's also the conclusion, which could also be one additional finding or a conclusion about, uh, the practical difficulty.
Yeah, I never do turn that page over, do I? I think I did this last meeting, too. All right, so we, so we do have a a conclusions. We've talked about the proposed findings of fact, the pro- proposed additional findings, proposed conclusion being there is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance and a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause a practical difficulty as defined by thirty A MRSA, section four, three, five, three, or dash C. So with our friendly amendment, with that addition, uh, of of our proposed conclusion, do we have a a motion to approve?
I moved.
All right, we got Michael to move move that.
Second.
Second. Kevin, we got a second. Mike Valencourt, oh, any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mike Valencourt in favor.
Michael Tatum Wheeling in favor.
Kevin Justin in favor.
Karen, uh, that was Kevin and Aaron, uh, in stereo once again.
Colin Powers in favor.
Matthew Kane in favor.
All right, uh, the motion carries. Um, thank you, Ms. Hill. Uh, thank you, Attorney Danielson. Always good to good to see you and, um, good luck with it. I hope I hope the project goes well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work and your thoughts and consideration. Thank you.
Take care. All right, all right, uh. Stick with me for just a minute here. All right, we are on to new business item number three, to hear the request of Galen and Robert Zimmerman, owners of the property at Three Roundabout Lane, map U three, six lot seven, seven, to enlarge a non-conforming, single-family dwelling based on sections nineteen dash four dash three dot B dot four of the zoning ordinance. Do we have Mr. and or, uh, Ms. Zimmerman, uh, participating here? I, it's like I see you guys on the screen. Are you with us?
Can you see us?
All right, very good.
Yeah, we see you.
Hold on.
Excellent. You're welcome to participate via video. Certainly need to. Okay, good. There we go. Good to see you guys.
Good evening, yes.
It's funny you're ever gonna get to us.
Good evening, yeah, eventually, right? So, yeah, so we 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 will move on to your application, and I'll ask, um, Ben, our our code code enforcement officer, to give us a quick a quick briefing on the application, please.
Yes, uh, the Zimmerman's presented a a building permit application to do a vertical expansion on an existing two-car garage attached to their house. But a portion of that garage is within the twenty-five-foot side setback line. This is, uh, a non-conforming lot in the RA zone. And I was trying to trying to find my document to see exactly how far it is. It's, uh, so the existing two, the existing attached two-car garage is thirteen feet from the side property line. And they, and they want to expand upward on that. And, uh, when the the Zimmerman's told me that all their neighbors supported their application, I always chuckle when when people say that because it's never in my life been true, but this might be the first time in my life that that that's actually true, that I I think I received an email from just about every one of their neighbors, so this this is a first for me. That's just because we're so nice.
I I did see the emails coming in, and I thought, oh, and yeah, I was I was surprised as well to see all the all the support, so apparently.
And a phone call.
You guys, you guys are good neighbors, so that's a good.
Yeah, we all try on roundabout, yeah.
All right, well, I, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman, we'll we'll turn it over to you then to chat a little bit about your application and and what you're seeking and why you're seeking it, and then we can, uh, take it from there.
Absolutely, yeah. So what we've been doing is basically renovating the house as it goes, but, um, our garage is the last step to it, and, uh, it is old, and so we're trying to build a new garage, and we'd like to expand upwards. Build a rec room. We have two kids. They're gonna be teenagers soon, so we're trying to build some family space there. And build ourselves a nice, uh, bedroom to go with that.
On the existing footprint.
Yeah, it's all on the existing footprint. We're not trying to get closer to the property line. The the neighbor that is closest to his house is actually quite far away from us. We're we're the ones that are close to the property line. That is our story.
Thank you, thank you. We may have some additional questions for you.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate the input. Any, uh, questions, uh, from the board for, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman, Zimmerman at this point in time? Mike, and then Kevin.
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, I I see this, uh, I don't know if it's a, I don't know if you took this photo with a drone or what, but, um, it's, uh, it's it's great to show us, um, sort of what it's gonna do to, or potentially do to views, uh, which is, as you know, some, one of the things we have to consider. Can you, can you just, um, and and I know that, I know that street is is relatively flat. I don't think any of your neighbors are sitting sort of higher and and looking at the ocean, but can you, can you comment a little further on on the views that this?
Yeah, that, uh, reason, oh, sorry, the the reason why, that is a drone, by the way. Um, our neighbor across the street was our biggest concern. She just renovated her house and went up, um, four views. She actually can see right over our houses.
That's her view.
Um, and the the reason why we're expanding over the garage is because it really doesn't affect anyone else. And we were trying to show that the build would actually block for her. Um, she didn't have any concerns with it and actually approved it as far as I know.
She called Ben, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, great. That, well, that sounds very helpful. Thank you. Oh, I got Mike.
Kevin, I think you're up, right?
Yeah, just one, one real quick thing. Hey, guys. The garage, uh, are you building over it, or are you actually tearing it all down and then replacing the garage on?
Is old, and we're tearing it down, and we need to build a new garage. Obviously, we need to build a stronger garage, but, yeah.
Okay, excellent. I just, I wanted to confirm that was the case on the specific ordinance and and the way the application was set up, so. Cool.
The foundation is perfect. It's, uh, we are adding an extra footing with the steel beam to support the weight inside the garage. I think we're gonna have an issue with the foundation there.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, other questions for the applicants for Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman at at this point? All right, I don't see any. Uh, Ben, you mentioned that you you'd gotten some feedback, uh, via email, all supportive of the project.
Yes, and several of them were forwarded to you. Uh, a couple more came in after business hours today, so there's, uh, there's a couple that you're not aware of, but they've, uh, they've all been in support, I believe. Maybe, I I think seven emails total and one phone call, all in support of the application.
We've lived here twenty years.
That doesn't mean they're all gonna support it.
We're nice.
Great. Any, um, any members of of the public on with us tonight who might want to uh, comment on the Zimmerman application? Again, I I don't see anybody, but Ben, if you could just confirm that for me.
Confirmed.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, uh, let's, uh, then then close this and go to, um, board discussion, uh, and we may have some additional questions for you, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman. Thoughts from the board? Gavin.
I I would just throw out there, views were really my only consideration with this. I've spent a fair amount of time on this street, um, uh, you know, between the Zimmerman's house and kind of the other, uh, side down roundabout. And, you know, having the neighbors be supportive of the views, I really see no issue, um, no other issues with this application in terms of the other criteria that we're looking at, so I'm I'm supportive of it.
Matthew.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of questions for Ben. O- o- on the, um, building permit, the height is thirty-five feet. That's one of the features that you have to consider.
Yes.
On the drawing where we look at the pictures, maybe which one? Probably that one there. The that one here, this is the, um, this version that's stapled, it's a two-page or pages. I just query, um, when there is a little portion that's attached to the house, to the garage, the, um, that little looks like it's a ramp, is that part of the structure, or is that not considered part of the structure for setback purposes?
Is it, which part are you referring? There is an existing side ramp already, yeah. But are you referring to the side or the front, the back? Yeah, that's, that's my understanding is that that is existing now. Yes. And so that wouldn't be
It's not being touched.
Part of this application. No, and that that is all within the setback. If you're talking about the stairs.
No, we're talking about the ramp.
Oh, the ramp. Yeah, the ramp, the ramp on the side is existing. Yeah.
Non-conforming, but not a violation, right?
Right.
Right words, right?
It was here when we bought it.
So I'm just query the why? Why? This is just a query. I mean, what? You know, the applicants could have expanded to the edge of the railing.
We could.
No, why is that, Ben?
No. Well, decks decks have lesser setbacks. Decks and landings have lesser setbacks than enclosed structures.
And so the ramp is what you is your interpretation of a of a deck?
Yes.
Okay. And so the overhang that's on this drawing here. Is that in the setback or or is this considered? It's not an issue because it's it's over the ramp.
That front part is just decorative. It's like a it's a decorative insert, basically. It's like a little roof.
Yeah, but it's Yeah, we're allowed. We're allowed two-foot overhangs into the setback.
Thank you, Ben. That's it. That's all my queries.
Sorry.
What else do we have? I think we we may be into a motion making time. Stick with me. There's a lot of paperwork here tonight. Sounds like the the board is willing to entertain a motion to approve the request of Galen and Robert Zimmerman, owners of the property through Roundabout Lane map U three six lot seventy-seven to enlarge a nonconforming, single-family dwelling based on sections nineteen dash four dash three dot B four of the zoning ordinance. Anybody up for making the motion? So I moved. Matt, I think you beat Colin just barely, but we'll call Colin a second. We've got the motion by Matthew, second by Colin. Further discussion from the board. Hearing none. Mike Valencourt in favor of the motion. Michael, just wave.
Like Adam Wieland in favor.
Kevin Justin in favor.
That came in favor.
See it happen every time. Colin Powers in favor.
Just for the record, both Aaron and Matthew are in favor as well.
The mute kills me here.
Yeah. All right, good. So the motion carries. Mr. And Mrs. Zimmerman, congratulations on a on a renovation in this economy and this whole. This is just the beginning of your your process. I'm sure your adventure, we'll call it. We do have to run through some quick findings of fact. We'd ask you to stick around just until we do that to ensure that we don't have any additional questions for you. And then you will be off and running and working with Ben to to get this project, get this party started. Hold on just a second. All right, here we go. So the the motion to approve the application has has been approved by the zoning board. We have findings of fact to work through, proposed finding of fact, one, the property is a nonconforming lot in the RA zone. The property contains a single-family dwelling. Proposed finding of fact, two, the existing house does not meet the side setback requirement. The owner would like to reconstruct and expand the attached garage upward on the same footprint. Proposed additional finding of fact, one, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties and the impact on views. Proposed additional finding of fact, two, the proposed structure will not increase the nonconformity of the existing structure. Proposed additional finding of fact, three, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirement to the greatest practical practical extent. And proposed additional finding of fact, four, the building reconstruction meets the setback to the greatest practical extent based on the criteria in section nineteen dash four dash three dot B dot two and B dot four in the zoning ordinance. Thoughts on proposed findings and proposed additional findings? All right.
I would move we accept them as written.
Perfect, perfect. We have a second.
Second.
All right, we've got a second by Aaron to approve to approve the proposed findings and proposed proposed additional findings. Matthew?
Yeah, I know it's late. I just want to double check. Under number four, on the additional finding, is that the right ordinance section? At the bottom, it's B two and B four.
You think so, Ben? Okay, we're getting we're getting a nod from our code enforcement officer. So I'm gonna defer him.
Yeah, B four is the section for expansion and that refers back to B two for the criteria.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Good question. All right, then. All in favor, Mike Valencourt in favor?
Mike, Kevin Justin in favor. Kevin Justin in favor.
Aaron Moser in favor.
Colin Powers in favor.
Matt Cain in favor.
All right. You folks are all set. Good luck with everything.
Thank you so much.
The time with us tonight and good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care.
We get to leave. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm not looking at the video. So when you made the motion, I did not see who did that. So that last motion on the findings of fact.
I made the motion, Kevin just.
Thank you.
Made the motion on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Carmen. Okay, on to our last agenda item for the evening. And this is to hear the request of Todd Bridson and Rachel Flaxman, owners of the property at sixteen State Avenue map U two eight lot two six to replace their garage with a shed based on section nineteen dash four dash four dot B dot three of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Bridson and Ms. Flaxman, are you with us this evening? There you are.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
We'll we'll turn to you for your input and and ask you some questions, I'm sure, in just a moment. We'll lead off with Ben McDougall, our code enforcement officer. If Ben, if you could just give us a quick a quick brief on the on the application.
Yes. Mrs. Flaxman came to me a month or so ago needing to replace a dilapidated garage. And it is clearly a garage in in disrepair. I I did speak to her and, you know, encourage her that this would be an easier process if she was just able to repair the garage in place. But the foundation is just shot and sinking and the thing, the thing is beyond repair. So they don't quite meet the setback to the seventy-five-foot setback to Trout Brook. So they are required to come before the zoning board to demonstrate that they're meeting that setback to the greatest practical extent. It's a very small lot in the RC zone.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn to Mr. Bridson and Ms. Flaxman. If you want to take just a couple of minutes and explain your application to the board. Sure.
Sure thing. Thank you very much. We're hoping we're going for four for four tonight, right? So this one, we're hoping this is a slam dunk. If you have the pictures in front of you, you can see that this is an original garage nineteen forty-two, nineteen forty-three garage that has seen much, much better days. The slab, concrete slab that it's built on is cracked and slowly sliding. And it just has a lot to be desired there. So our hope is to replace it with a shed that's actually slightly smaller, an eight-by-twelve shed that will, you know, won't be won't be any higher. We're basically using the existing footprint, if not a little bit less of it. I think it puts us at sixty. It's the same setback to the Brooks, sixty-eight feet, I think, as opposed to the seventy-five feet, which is what we're looking for. So.
And it's a it's a prefab shed, so it'll be delivered, built, pre-built, not built on site.
I saw the the photos that you included of that. All right. Thank you. Anything else you want to add at the moment? I mean, we will ask you questions if we have any.
Yeah, we did get. We got a verbal okay from our neighbor at number fourteen, Steffi Cox. She, we didn't get anything documented or, you know, or recorded, but she was, she said she had no problem with what we were gonna do. It's it is basically just replacing the old garage with a new shed. There's not a whole lot to it, really. So that's about all I need to add.
All right, thank you. Ben?
I did receive an email from Steffi Cox at fourteen State Avenue expressing her support for the application. And I didn't receive any any other correspondence.
Good. Great, thank you. We'll move into questions for the applicants and then we'll see if we have any any input from the public. Kevin, I think your hand popped up first.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your patience this evening. Just real quick, the only question I had was in looking at the plan, I guess, the mortgage survey you have, it looks like you have steps from a back vestibule or a back deck that lead toward the garage area. And I was only getting one if that was the case and two, if that would those steps and the need for a landing pad there would have prevented you from pushing that shed any further forward on the property.
Right. So that original survey that's from when we bought the house or, you know, we received it when we bought the house. Subsequent to that, we've put a large addition off the back. So we no longer, we, our family room that we're in right now goes just about to that seventy-five foot line, which is why the shed's actually going to be a little smaller than the garage was because it impacted that.
Great. Yeah, that answers. I was seeing a little bit of conflict with the survey and with what looked like the picture. So.
About ten, ten or eleven years ago, we put a family room off the back.
Great, thank you. That's all I have. I think fairly straightforward application otherwise.
Michael?
Yeah, I can you give us a sense of how close is that existing garage to the to the side property line and and how how close will the shed be?
Yeah, that was about, I want to see, it's the same. It's the same distance as is as exists right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. I did a little sketch right there. What's that? Four foot, seven inches.
It's really light on the drawing.
I see it.
It's four foot, seven. So it is, it's close to that property line. And so that's the existing and that's what we would be.
So yeah, so it's it's not getting any closer.
Correct.
Perfect. So I got. Thank you.
Any additional questions for our?
I do. Real quick.
Yes.
Is this going on a slab?
So what what I have to do for this one, that there's an old existing slab that's all broken. I'm gonna end up demoing that and using it for backfill. Basically, I'm gonna build a little segmental retaining wall about eighteen inches tall is all I need. And I'm gonna fill it with crushed stone. So this this, the whole unit's gonna sit on a crushed stone base.
Yeah. Okay.
And the retaining wall will be within that sixty-eight feet.
The same. Yeah, the retaining wall will be at the same footprint as the size of the shed.
All right, thank you. This is probably more for Ben, but I'm curious why this is coming in front of us.
It's because it's not seventy-five feet from Trout Brook. I I can't approve the replacement of a structure within within seventy-five feet within a seventy-five-foot shoreline zoning setback. I could, based on the side setback, I have, I could, I could approve this with the four foot, seven foot side setback. But it's the sixty-nine feet on on the rear that I can't do.
I think my question is, is it anything or I'm just, it's really not really pertinent to this, but is it?
It's just like the the intent of shoreline zoning is that if if people are tearing down something and replacing it, they're supposed to try to meet the setback. And that's and and that's what your charge is here to see if it's practical for them to meet the seventy-five-foot setback than they're supposed to. If it's not practical for them to meet the setback, then they can be allowed to.
Right. But I think what my question is, we have a more permanent situation that exists right now with a poor concrete foundation. They're going to, you know, semi-permeable anyway, fill and then with a pre-built shed placed. I'm just curious why that's considered a structure then, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's still considered a structure, even though it's more, you know, more of a shed and less of a foundation. It still is a structure with a foundation. But but yeah, it's.
Just from education, that would trigger this shoreline zone.
It it still would. It's still. It's still considered to be a structure.
Fair enough. Great, thanks.
Matthew, go for it.
Thank you, Chair. Ben, this I had a query. I seem to recall that there's a setback requirements for I can't recall the term now, but it's non-residential structures. I seem to recall that there was someone wanted to put in like a shed at the front of their front corner of their property. And the question is whether it's had a living arrangement in it. But do does that ring a bell to you?
Not yet.
They're like an accessory structure.
So I think that's right. So we're not calling this replacement or reconstruction structure and accessory structure. Right? This is just a general general concept of a structure and just so happens to be a shed that's replacing a permanent garage at one time.
Yeah, it is. It's an accessory structure by definition. It's not an accessory dwelling unit or or anything like that. But yeah, any any shed or detached garage would be considered an accessory structure.
So the applicant does not lose any rights replacing the current structure with a prefabricated shed.
Correct. It means the same, you know, them doing an eight-by-twelve prefab shed on a stone base from a zoning perspective means the exact same thing if they poured, you know, four-foot frost wall foundation with the slab and stick built an eight-by-twelve structure on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron? Yeah, one just one question. How how large is the structure now?
Nine by twelve. We're losing.
Okay, so you go from nine by twelve to eight by twelve. Okay.
Yeah, just slightly smaller.
Okay, yeah, I guess just on the on the diagram, it looks like it's gonna be a big difference, but it won't be.
What happened was we had a one-car garage and we had to cut the front part off when we put the addition on. So we already lost part of the garage.
That's not showing on. Yeah.
Getting smaller and smaller, which.
Okay, living space is more important than garage. Good. All right, any additional questions for the applicants at this point? All right. I'm not seeing any. So any members of the public available to comment on this particular application? I don't see anybody else on. Ben, do you see anybody?
I don't.
All right, okay. Well, we will we'll close this then and move on to board discussion. We will certainly reserve the right to pose any questions to you to the extent they come come up as we consider this as a board. What's the what are the thoughts of the board members tonight on this application? Michael?
Yeah, I just, a- after, uh, after my rant about surveys earlier, I, I just wanted to, wanted to, uh, point out, this is a a mortgage survey, but, but what we have here is replacement in essentially the exact same location, so, so it's, uh, I, I think this is fine. Um, I, I think I think this application makes complete sense, and, uh, I'm, I'm in support of it, thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in support as well. Um, I actually think the, uh, potential for soil erosion gets better by not having the foundation as opposed to having the, the crushed stone and, um, probably is an improvement on the property, and I understand why it has to come here, and it makes sense. Uh, you know, you have to have that rule with the 75-foot, uh, setback, um, but, you know, I, I have no issue with this.
All right, well, it's, it sounds to me like the board is prepared to entertain the following motion, which is to approve the request of Todd Bridson and Rachel Flaxman, owners of the property at 16 State Avenue, map U28 Lot 26, replace their garage with a shed based on section 19-4-4.B dot three of the zoning ordinance. Anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
All right, we've got Kevin, we've got Aaron as a second.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Uh, discussion, uh, from the board on, on this motion. I, I too am in, in favor. I think this makes, uh, makes perfect sense for all the reasons that, uh, that Kevin and, uh, Michael articulated. Um, I'll, I'll vote in favor.
Kevin Justin in favor?
Aaron Moser in favor?
Colin Powers in favor.
Matt Kane in favor?
Michael Tatum-Wieland in favor.
All right, good, good. So the motion carries, as, as you both have heard, I think exactly three other times this evening, uh, if you've been on for the whole time, we're just gonna run through some findings of fact. We'd ask you to stick around for that. Um, and then I think we can all call it a night. Um, congratulations on the approval. As, as far as the, uh, proposed findings of fact, we have proposed finding of fact, one, the property is a non-conforming lot in the RC zone. The property contains a single-family dwelling and garage. Proposed finding of fact, two, the existing garage does not meet the 75-foot setback from Trout Brook. The owner would like to replace the garage with a shed without getting closer to Trout Brook. Proposed additional finding of fact, one, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on, on the property and, and on adjacent properties and the impact on views. Proposed additional finding of fact, two, the proposed structure will not increase the non-conformity of the existing structure. Proposed additional finding of fact, three, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirement to the greatest practical extent. Proposed additional finding of fact, four, the building reconstruction meets the setback to the greatest practical extent based on the criteria in section 19-4-4.B dot two and B dot three in the zoning ordinance. Um, any comments from the board on the proposed findings of fact and the proposed additional findings of fact? All right, uh, hearing none, um, we can entertain a motion to approve the proposed findings of fact, and the proposed additional findings of fact is read into the record. Do we have a motion?
So moved, oh, I'll second.
We've got Matthew, uh, on the motion. We've got Kevin on the second, uh, discussion of the proposed findings. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, Mike Valencourt in favor?
Michael Tatum-Wieland in favor.
Aaron Moser in favor?
Kevin Justin in favor.
Colin Powers in favor.
Matt Kane in favor?
All right, that does it. We've approved the application. We've approved the, uh, findings of fact. Uh, thank you both for hanging with us tonight, and, uh, good luck with the project.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody, for your time, and Ben, your daughter's really cute.
You should definitely put that, uh, guitar over the top of it still.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes, I will.
Uh, we're, we're, we're signing off here. Thank you very much, all, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, take care, and, and, uh, as, as far as the board's business, I think that pretty well sums it up, Ben. I, I saw an email from you, I think, earlier today that we're, we're back, uh, live come next month. Do we have, um, any applications on the horizon?
There, there are one or two tire kickers, so we, we may be having a meeting next month. I'm not positive yet, uh, but yeah, we're gonna be back in person.
All right, okay. Um, anything else from any other members of the board, or shall we call it a night?
Call it a night.
All right, very good. We'll consider this adjourned. Thank you all.
Right.
Good night.
Great, thanks, bye, buddy.
Bye.